Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the January sixth, two thousand sixteen. You all right, Charlie?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'll talk slow. Two thousand sixteen zoning board of fields meeting. My name is Tom Wakefield. On my left is Kathy Franzen, Casey Bailey, Mark McCabe, Dan McDonald, and our recording secretary is Julie House. Tonight we have a couple items. One is a continuation of application. Two thousand fifteen dash seven made by Craig DeDece for the premises located at sixteen Sylvan Street, plot sixteen, lot ninety-seven, in the RB residential zone for a variance to build a garage according to all applicable sections of the town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including section three oh five. A vote is anticipated. Why don't you come up since you're the only one here tonight, we can do this more informal. Go ahead. Would you come up?
I have two sketches here, one of a hand drawing with a lot more measurements on it, but I also have one that was drafted out.
Were you at the meeting, were you?
Yeah.
Were you at the last meeting?
Yes, he was there.
Yeah, I was there.
Okay, so you know?
I know all the issues.
Thank you.
That's what we want, all the issues.
I have issues.
Yeah, we know the hat's one of them. Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you're going with an eight-foot setback all the way in the back, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The only thing, okay, I see on one of them you have it, you have it on one, this one down here. I like this layout better, this one here, but it doesn't have the numbers that we're looking for, which is on here, and I'm gonna write them on here, which is in the property line. I did not write them on there just for the simplicity of it.
Eighteen feet from the ESTI property?
Correct.
Eighteen feet.
Wait a minute, which one is ESTI?
Ah, to the right.
Right-hand side.
House, to the right.
I got forty-two feet.
No.
I got forty-four. No, forty-four is the length.
No, I'm saying right here. To the garage, forty-two feet.
I'm sorry, that's the house.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the garage.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Eighteen here.
The deck's long. Okay, here's what I'm gonna do.
The deck is lined up with the house, so it's eighteen feet to the line, right there, see it? That's the length.
Oh, gotcha. So it's eighteen from here.
Eighteen from here.
And what's the span here?
Forty-two.
Okay. And the garage is twenty-six by?
Twenty-six by forty.
Forty-two, twenty-six by forty-two. And it's forty-two feet from, you said the?
From the ESTI's property, yes.
This is on the right, ESTI's is the current owner?
Correct.
Now. The reason that. Well, it looks like you've cut your driveway off.
I cut the driveway off some so I could get the garage. I had to bring the garage into the driveway.
Yeah.
To get the eight feet.
You couldn't do another seven?
It's, there wouldn't be any way to turn in and out of the garage doing that. I'd lose my driveway. That leaves me twenty feet.
Yeah, but that's only for one door. You're gonna have three doors there, that's, you have two other.
I'm gonna have two doors, two ten-foot doors, and the way it was mapped out with the two ten-foot doors, it's gonna give me access to be able to pull in and back out safely.
So if you want another seven feet off the line, you'd only have thirteen feet to try to maneuver something into that.
I'd have thirteen feet, but four feet from the house to the driveway is bushes, so I'd only have nine.
Oh, that's right, right, okay, okay, yep, 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 yep.
Where are the doors gonna be on there?
Yeah, where are the doors? Is this the workshop though, right here though, with the twenty?
Cause you got forty-two feet, so are they justified or are they?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
So how far from the corner?
Three feet off the corner.
Three feet in, then ten.
Ten, then three.
Then three.
Then ten.
And then ten, so what's this gonna be over here?
That's gonna be my work area with an entrance walk-in door. Gotcha, this is work area. Okay. Just like a three-foot door type thing.
Right.
Just a regular home thirty-six inch by six-eight door.
Craig, I thought that the other layout that you had, when we discussed it the other night, the last meeting, was that the, your workshop was gonna be on, if we're facing this, your workshop was gonna be on the right-hand side.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's where it's gonna be. There's gonna be a walk-in door, thirty-six inch door, home door, six foot eight, to walk in there.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna have.
Three feet over and then ten?
Three feet, then ten, then three, then ten.
Yeah, gotcha, so three and ten.
Yep.
Okay, and then three and ten.
Yep.
Okay, good, yeah? So that's twenty-six feet.
Correct.
So forty-two minus twenty-six is what?
Eighteen, or sixteen.
Let's see, it is, yeah, sixteen feet.
For a work area.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you show me, I think I kinda know where the workshop door would be, was that right around here?
Absolutely right.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Hey Craig, from?
Thank you.
From this point right here.
Yep.
To here. This is sixteen feet?
It's actually, and that's why I didn't put the measurements on there, because if you look at the one that I have the measurements on, from the driveway to the corner of my house is twenty-nine feet, okay? Then I have thirteen feet of area. So we got twenty-nine, that's why I didn't scale that. I asked him to use that one.
Well.
Why the handle?
Yeah, but you see, Craig.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Put you to the house. Three, ten.
Is twenty-six.
Ten, yes, twenty-six.
Correct.
So you get, so if you were to move that up, you can still have your workshop, and you don't need a variance.
But I can't because of the way the septic system is, if you remember correctly where my septic layout is.
It's under the driveway?
It's under the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not where you have to come up.
No.
You only need seven feet.
But then.
You got twenty feet.
To back out of the driveway and without hitting the house.
You got to go that way.
Which you can't cause the septic.
That's why I had the problem with not putting it on that side of the driveway.
Can I see that again, what he just said?
Yeah, yeah.
The paper I gave you the last time.
Yep. Here it is. Okay. See, he saw.
I'm moving into my driveway, I've got four feet off the house. If I move in another seven feet, I'm gonna have nine feet backing out of the garage. I'm gonna have nine, if you take away the four feet that's close to the house where my bushes are. There's no driveway, that's all, that's, it's.
Shrubbery?
Shrubbery.
Yeah.
The driveway is.
Shrubbery, could that be moved?
Well, I couldn't put the driveway closer to the house because I've got a fieldstone foundation, and I don't wanna take a chance on backing up and moving the earth and tapping the foundation with the earth. I mean, it's, the foundation's over a hundred years old, it's fieldstone, it's, it's.
Question.
Yes.
So on your old drawing, and I think that we talked about this at the last meeting, you have the depth of the garage at twenty-four?
We changed that down because I didn't think I was gonna be able to fit the twenty-six feet.
Okay. So would twenty-four still work for your purposes of the garage?
It would, but then I wouldn't be able to back a truck in with a plow.
With a plow, that's right, okay. But that's something that would gain you two feet, so it would be a ten-foot setback, if that makes any difference to anyone else.
Oh, I thought.
We did, we talked about eight, and I.
To talk about eight, and that's why I redrafted, we remeasured, we reconfigured. I mean, I spent two weeks trying to calculate how this would best fit to make it work, and this is, I mean, I was.
I understand, I'm trying to.
Absolutely.
Convince as many people as who can be convinced.
Kathy, you missed, we were here a couple meetings, and he originally wanted it, I think, three feet from there?
We owe a foot off of property.
A foot, yeah.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it was, obviously, and so we discussed that. The only concern that I have is that this is not a typical twenty-six forty-two garage. It's a high-posted garage, similar to if you're going up School Street, uphill on the right, that gray one, two-story.
It's not gonna be that high.
You said it was twelve, fourteen feet?
Well, I figured, we figured, we figured the dimensions, and if the foundation is to ground level, and I do ten-foot walls with a four-foot knee wall with a six-and-a-half pitch, I'm twenty-one-six, which is not the thirty feet that that garage on School Street is.
Yeah, it's still a high-posted garage versus just a typical eight-foot garage, so it's, it's, typically, your garage is a twenty-four, this is twenty-six, which is gonna put another, it's gonna jack it up pythorized as well.
But there's no finished second level or anything, right?
No, no.
It's just open space to, yeah.
No finish.
Flat roof, right? Is it, is it six-pitch?
Six-pitch, six-and-a-half.
Yeah.
There's no finish, no nothing, it's gonna be storage.
Yeah, six and.
Probably won't even be insulated.
Six-and-a-half is gonna give you, on thirteen feet is gonna give you probably close to eight foot from the top of the plate up there, so that's eight and eighteen feet plus, you said you're gonna come up four feet?
We're thinking a four-foot knee wall.
Knee wall.
Yeah, I could cut that to three, it brings me to twenty-one. It was twenty, it was.
And that's, I mean, that's a pretty towering structure. Now, I didn't say the gentleman.
Thirty-three feet high.
The gentleman that was here didn't have any problem with it, but.
The woman is actually, he's the only abutter that.
Yeah, I see him, and he was very clear he didn't have any problem with it, but as things go, he may not own that property for ever and ever, amen, and so that's a really big.
I don't think twenty-one feet is that high, do you?
Twenty-one feet's not that high. Twenty-one-six is standard.
Yeah. And then they have, they have, I think there was thirteen feet of woods, nearly.
No, there's almost thirty feet.
Oh, thirty feet of woods.
Thirty feet.
All right, in between.
Can you see, can you see his house from your house now?
In the wintertime, that's, summertime, absolutely not.
Remember I said you'd rather see the back of the garage than him on the deck drinking a beer?
No, in the wintertime, it can work.
Go watch either, get binoculars.
And you know, somebody really was bothered later on, they could plant the roll of Robiniteys or something, you know?
Dan, you got any questions, Dan?
No, I mean, I think it would fit the character of the neighborhood, twenty-one feet, I got a garage with a, I call it a cathedral ceiling, it's more height than you need, you know?
I'm not looking for a lot of height.
It's not big enough for a second floor, but you could go up with some shelving or something like that, so.
Storage.
Nothing, nothing with the snow we got last year, I think everyone's gotta go a little steeper on the pitch.
Yeah.
Anybody who was thinking about a flat roof might wanna reconsider.
Six-and-a-half.
Six-and-a-half on the front of the house, let me tell you, four feet to five feet of snow up there, shoveling.
So what is the angle on the roof there? I mean, is it?
Six-and-a-half.
Six-and-a-half.
It's gonna be a regular six-and-a-half pitch.
That's a good pitch.
I mean, is that standard, you're a former building guy.
Well, four, four-five, you know, that's what do you.
So six is steep, six is good, it's good.
It's more aggressive.
It's a pitch, yeah.
I know mine's.
You can still shingle six without brackets, but you know.
Same type of character, if it would be similar pitch.
Are they gonna be standard residential doors, or are they gonna be overhead and commercial stuff?
But the front of my house is strange.
Get his truck in there.
The front roof.
Like a twenty-five-hundred or something?
Where my house is designed.
I think he has it, I think he has. No, no, he's got a big Chevy.
What size doors you gonna have?
Ten-foot.
Ten-foot, that's what I have on my barn.
Yeah, see, you have probably a nine, eight, nine, seven.
That's the pitch on the house.
Car stuff, you know, six-and-a-half probably.
No, it's seven, it's probably nine-seven, nine wide, seven high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just residential stuff.
That'd be the pitch on the garage, so it's gonna be symmetrical, it's gonna fit, the layout, it'll look like it belonged there, it'll look like it was built.
Do it look like it's built here?
At the same time, right.
Hopefully, you mean, oh, for the beginning of time, okay.
It's gonna blend in with the scene.
Yeah. You won't even see it from my place, will you?
You won't even know it wasn't there.
With my house, you won't even see it. That's good.
I'd like to take a vote, any questions?
I mean, I think with the way his, you know, he's got a great issue on one side, he's got the septic that's in an oddball spot. I think it's within the character of the neighborhood.
I really think if he put it to the left with that big lawn area as any which you can't, that's what it would look terrible. It looked like another building was put there, it was just, you know what I'm saying?
And the other thing.
Yeah, yeah, it looked awful.
And the other thing I like about it, how far is it gonna be? It's behind the corner here, so you're kinda tucking in behind the corner a lot.
So some of you are gonna see behind the house.
So you drive by, it's.
You're gonna see part of it.
The garage looks smaller than it is. You can't see the whole garage.
No.
So, you know, twenty-six feet deep, is that, I never measured my garage.
Well.
Is that what, you could fit a pickup truck in type of thing?
Yeah, you, you know.
With a plow in front, that would need three feet on the.
Usually with a barn, it'd be the opposite, it'd be, like mine's twenty-eight by forty, you know, but his is, he can't, you know?
I think it's reasonable your butters are in favor, you know, they just support you on it.
Hundred percent.
Eight feet, you can get a fireman around the building.
Absolutely.
They had to put out a fire on the backside, which they did on Bear Hill Road a few weeks back, right?
Yeah.
Put a ladder up, which is usually part of the trouble too. You've only got one foot, you can't put a ladder up, you can't do anything.
That was actually ten feet from the fence.
There's nothing.
Was it?
Yeah.
There's no building near the property line in the back, so in an emergency where a firefighter was not perceptive of the property lines, there would be access.
There's access several different ways.
Can you access the back of that building from your neighbors out back to?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
I tend to agree with Dan, I think that there's a demonstration of hardship, and that what's been proposed is appropriate for the neighborhood, and appropriate for the constraints of the property.
I agree too, plus the eight feet, plus it's not living space, and I don't see a problem with it at all.
We work the drawings, you know, it's gotta be something.
What's the frontage of your lot?
One feet, it's tough to squeeze by, it'd be pretty scary.
He's got quite a bit of frontage there. What's your frontage on your lot? Two-hundred and thirty-four feet. Okay, two-hundred and thirty-four. And your depth of your lot's one-thirty, okay. So, any other questions before we close the hearing?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, I want a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Close the discussion, we're not closing the hearing.
Yeah, discussion, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we're not going to that executive session.
No, 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 not that, no, no, yeah.
Close discussion, I'm going on discussion now.
Okay, good, okay, good. Now, I think we've hashed this over a couple times, I don't think we gotta go any further.
I think we know the facts.
All right, how about if we make?
Well, before we do that, there is someone else in the room who may have an opinion, who may have been here, that's why maybe they're here. You need to call for that.
I don't see anyone else here.
Okay, I'm, but if other people come, you have to ask.
He's sleeping.
Before you close it, you have to ask for any other opinion.
No, no, he's here.
Okay, that's fine, I just, but.
He's here.
He's here to try out the rocking chair.
He's here to try out the rocking chair and to keep order.
They're nice, huh, Carolina rockers, those are sweet.
But that's customary, if there's other people in the room, you need to ask their opinion before you close the public hearing.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Then how about?
Okay, so did we pass that motion?
No, we just voted to close the discussion.
Okay, we didn't actually vote, that's what I'm saying.
No, we haven't voted.
So do you wanna run it again?
I think we gotta wait till next month.
Yeah, yeah, no. Let's just make a motion to, Dan seconded, to, just to close the discussion, so we can make, pick a vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, well, listen, let's see, I got a form here, let me just see if I can see what it is here. Really good, all right.
How you doing, all right?
We haven't done many of these variances in the time I've been here, I think only one other one that I can think of. So that's why we got this form, and so I need a motion to approve the variance, and I'm gonna read the following stipulations. The dimension of the lot is two, the frontage of two-hundred and thirty-four feet, and the depth, one-hundred and thirty feet, and seeking a seven-foot variance to add a twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-six by forty-two.
Eight foot.
Eight foot.
Well, the variance is. No, the variance would be seven.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The opposite, yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's seeking a seven-foot variance to add a twenty-six by forty-two garage addition to the RB zone. Granted. Number two is granted for a twenty-six foot by forty-two foot garage. No addition or modification to the proposed structure is allowed unless the applicant goes before the zoning board of appeals for approval. Number three, shall meet all applicable sections of Groveland general zoning bylaws, including section three oh four point one and three oh five. A variance for relief of the rear setback only requirement is granted, no further reduction of lot size and no subdivision of the lot allowed. The decision to approve of this variance for seven-foot variance to build a two-car garage is non-assignable and shall expire at the change of ownership. Now, this is a standard form, I've never seen this in a variance.
Yeah, I don't think that that's correct.
Yeah, I'll take it.
It should be for commercial, shouldn't it?
Yeah, I've never seen it, I'm gonna take that out because that.
That should be for commercial district, right, or industrial?
Well, that's mostly for special permit, not for.
Where'd you get the form?
It's mostly for special permit and for variance.
Oh, okay, all right.
So special permit expires at the time of the ownership.
Where'd that come from, like legalzoom.com or something?
I think I know who it came from, I don't wanna say. I think it predates any of us on the board.
Nineteen seventy-eight?
I think it predates anyone on the board.
Say Brunswick Main wanted it or?
Yeah, right, yeah. The decision and approval of this variance for seven-foot variance to build.
They don't have any.
I'm gonna just say.
Yeah.
Runs with the property or?
Runs with the land.
Yeah, runs with the land.
You don't really even need to say it, it is, it does. Well, they're not gonna make the next owner tear it down, is the point.
So there's no confusion, later on, someone else could say, hey, that's only for you, so if we put it in here, it's never forever.
That would be a terrible investment.
Yeah, yeah. Any change of use to describe variance will require a subsequent hearing prior to any change being allowed to commence. I think you already said that, but that's in here. The application and all attachments are part of this decision which we have, and I will show you that I did, I just want you to see that I added, just so you know, I added that forty-two feet on the, you see right here?
Yeah.
This is gonna be part of the record, I just want you to.
You wanna initial it?
Yeah. Want him to initial it?
Initial it.
Yeah, why don't you initial that, Craig?
That's what I'm going on the building permit, right?
Yeah, that's part of the process, yeah.
And it's what gets registered.
Thank you. So the application and all attachments are part of the decision, for any of these variances due to unique circumstances, including the location and size of the garage. The type and amount of the relief requested is limited to the dimensions provided. And you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna date this plan as well, I'm gonna date this today as dated.
January sixth.
Dated.
Should we do two thousand sixteen?
Yeah, one-six, two-oh-one-six. She's like, you know, I haven't done the fifteen, I've been bitter on that. So what I'm gonna say is that the variance, granting of this variance is due to unique circumstances, including the location, size of the garage, the type of, amount of release is requested, limited to the dimension provided on plan dated dated one-six, two thousand sixteen. If the rights authorized to the applicant and our property owners under this decision to grant a variance are not exercised within two years from the date of decision is filed with the town clerk's office, and such granting of this variance shall become null and void.
It's one year.
One year? Okay, and we'll change, just change to one year then? It's an old form. One, let's go to one. One year, that'll be singular. From the date of this decision is filed with the town clerk's office, and such granting of this variance shall become null and void unless a substantial use thereof has commenced. No action on any variance, special permit, or any extension, modification, renewal thereof shall take effect until a copy of the decision shall, decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk, and no appeal has been filed, or that such appeal has been filed and that it has been dismissed or denied is recorded in the Essex South District Registry of Deeds in Salem, Massachusetts, indexed in the grantor index under the name of the owner or of record, or is recorded and noted on the owner's certificate of title. The applicant shall pay the fee for recording and registering, and the accompanying reported decision shall be filed with the town clerk. So I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application?
Mark McCabe makes a motion.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh, you're all set. Now, she's gonna tell you how it works. Julie will tell you exactly how it works.
Well, I'll have that typed up within fourteen days, and then there's a ten-day appeal period. I will send you a letter, and I will send you a copy of that, but you need to go and pick up the original and have it stamped at the Essex County Registry of Deeds, and then you need to bring it. And then you need to bring it back, yeah, you get it from Ann, the county clerk, and you need to bring it back to her stand.
After twenty-four days.
You, you'll bring the decision to Ann, and then twenty-day.
I'll have. I'll bring the decision to Ann. But I will send you a copy of it, when it, and then you need to get the original, um, from the authority and bring the original down to the registry of deeds.
Because she has to stamp it that no appeal has been filed with her, um, you can't, you can't report it without that.
Yeah.
MAC.
Your last name is MAC, right?
Last name, it's not gonna get back to you.
Yeah.
No, you bring it back to Ann, so she can, she can have it.
So you have to get it stamped by Ann, recorded, and then back to Ann, yeah.
It's easy to sign, it'll, it'll go. So.
Questions?
So we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We could get it done.
Take care. All right.
Happy New Year. We had to wait, you had to wait the whole year, you had to wait the whole year for that?
I'll see you next year, we said.
Yeah. Well, here it is.
You want your permit, I'll see you next year.
Thank you, thank you.
See you later.
All right, now, uh.
I had one question.
Go ahead.
Remember we had to mention something last meeting or the meeting before, why the building inspector doesn't attend the zoning board meetings?
Yeah.
What's going on with that?
Uh.
Wasn't that part of the, um, when he was hired?
That was part of, we're gonna. Yeah, I, 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 I don't know why he hasn't, uh, yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Is, is the chairman?
No, I, I spoke to him and, and he, he was of the opinion that he didn't have to meet it, so we'll, we'll discuss that at a later date.
He was told he has to go to any of the meetings that you guys need.
Yeah, I, I, I did approach him and then asked him, he said he, he didn't, he, he wasn't aware of that, so, so we'll, we'll get it resolved. We'll, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it resolved, I'm sure.
We'll clarify it.
We will clarify it, uh, so now the only other thing we got, Julie, is, uh. Uh, the invoice from Julie, uh, dated one-five-fifteen, this is for Julie House Administrative Assistant. In the, in the amount of three sixty-four forty-five. And then don't we have, uh, we have minutes too?
Yeah.
And what date are these, are these two, these two right here?
Three, six, okay.
All right, so let's do this in order.
I had a couple of comments on some of them, but.
Who does?
Is it time to discuss those comments?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, they're just, yeah, go ahead.
Um, on the.
Dan can't sign it.
Oh, I'm gonna abstain for that.
Okay, yeah, I understand, yep, no problem.
On the minutes for, um, from November fourth, I just, I forgot to bring the copy of that.
It's okay.
But on the second page, there's a part, Dan, where it says McDonald said it was remanded back because of the merits of a procedural error. Merit election was, that you, it was something you said because of a procedural error, not the merits.
Because of a procedural error.
Not the merits.
Yeah, that was one thing that is.
I read that, and then above that, there's an incomplete, you know, sentence.
I don't know, yeah.
Should be cross out, cross out.
Cross out merit.
Merit.
Because of a procedural error.
It wasn't on the merits, there was no, there was no hearing on the merits, it never got that far.
No, no. No. That's right.
Exactly.
You're right, yeah.
Um, and it was one other.
It's legal jargon, but lawyers pick right up on that.
I really liked it, I really liked it.
The notice was defective, I think.
That's what it was.
The issue.
Yes.
That was the basis of the man.
It never got beyond, it never got beyond that.
All right, that's fine, and then on the, um, there was, um. Oh, it was, um, the minutes of December second.
Did you, yeah, I see that, yeah, yeah.
When we continued this hearing, um, I didn't, Jennifer Cadigan, I don't think she was in a butter.
Yeah.
She was. Was she?
Yeah.
I thought she was just on a, okay, she had an abutter.
No, she, she, yeah, she, yeah, she was in a butter on the right-hand side, up in the back.
Who was that?
Yeah, the lady that sold the.
Cadigan, Stacy Cadigan. Her name was Julie Cadigan.
She's in the back, up in the back, on the right.
To which application?
Yeah, to Craig, yeah.
When, when we first met and had to continue it with the last three of them.
Yeah, she was sitting over there in the corner, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, she was in a butter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I, that.
She's not on Sylvan, she's on, um.
She's on Philbrook Street.
Philbrook Street, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's, yeah. Uh, so you can look this here.
So, oh, now we can, I know, we got our motion. Tom, we need a motion to.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, we do.
And people have to sign them?
Yep, all right, let me just, let's see, let's, we'll do, we'll do the, uh, we'll do this first.
Would be approved changes.
Did we move on that?
Yeah, we'll do that one first, that's a, that's the first, so I need a, a motion to approve, what's the amount on that, three?
Three sixty-four forty-five.
Three sixty-four forty-five, I need a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion by Casey Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show, Dan McDonald abstained. Okay, now, the minutes of November fourth, uh, with the page two. The word, the merits, uh, is, uh, removed, and, uh. With that. We need a motion to approve that.
I found another grammatical error.
In two, in that.
Who's taking these minutes anyways?
Yeah, what page?
You know, there's a verb missing, you know, you can insert verb of choice.
Oh, yeah.
On the last page, uh, conjugation of to be.
And what is, that's not.
What is?
Yeah, what is, yeah, is, or what's.
Well, you know, interesting enough, uh.
I probably wrote it.
If anyone's on Facebook and you see all this stuff, and they're writing this stuff, and they ju- uh, they, they jungle the words, I can read it, I mean, you know, I, I would probably read that and proof it and never see it because it's, you, you read it and it just.
Did I use the word, I'm hung up on it?
It blends in. I, I said that. I can't believe you'd ever.
I'm hung up on that?
Yeah, I never.
I don't have any hangup.
Yeah, I know, that must've been a typo. Yeah, I can't, you didn't really put that in there, did you? Okay.
Really not my vocabulary.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve November fourth, uh, min- minutes. So a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve November fourth meeting.
I'll second it.
And a second, and any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that one's done, okay, now let's do, let's look at the. How'd you make out with the, uh, this one here?
Didn't make any changes.
Oh, yeah, it's the one you thought, yeah, okay, yeah.
I thought it was.
Yeah, got you, no, she was, she was a, uh, she was an abutter. Okay, so, need a motion to approve December second mi- minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve December second minute.
I click the motion, seconded, Dan.
Second it.
Any discussion?
I'll second it, yes.
Yeah, any discussion, all those in favor? Approved. Okay, now we got, December sixteenth was, this was just a, a carryover from the other one and.
Do we all sign these?
So.
Do we all sign them?
Uh, I don't know, I have to, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Julie, do we all sign these?
Do we all?
No.
Okay, so I, we need a motion to approve December sixteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve December sixteenth meeting.